Okay, hey everybody, this is Frankie Aberzino and I am here with Sarasota County Commission Candidate Wesley Beggs. And she's gonna start off by telling us a little bit about herself so that I can share it on other pages and we can get people to join. So, go ahead, for the, those of you that are watching this as a recording, this is Wesley Beggs and go ahead and I'm gonna start sharing.
Awesome. Well, as you said, my name is Wesley Ann Beggs and I am a candidate for Sarasota County Commission in District 4. But it is an at-large seat, so I will appear on everybody's ballot if you're registered in the county. A little bit about myself, I'm a native Floridian, I'm a small business owner, but I think most importantly, at least to me, is that I'm a concerned citizen. For several years now, I've been in Sarasota County for almost 10 years and for several years now, I've been unsatisfied with the direction that we're going in. I think we can make improvements with our environmental regulations and protections certainly, especially on the heels of this, this big red tide bloom. We need to really address our affordable housing crisis and we need to make sure that we're building out our county sustainably and in terms of smart growth. So, I joke that we tend to build it first and plant it second, but we see that particularly in South County, where our evacuation routes and shelters are sorely lacking, but they continue to build out and add thousands and thousands of homes and now, now the stadium. So, I, I'm concerned that we're, we're moving in a direction that is gonna compromise our quality of life and compromise the, the success of future generations. So, I, I don't know if you've got everything shared.
We're good, we're good, no, we're good. And we, we only have like 45 minutes, so we're gonna try to rush through this as much as we can. Let me just get it on the website. There we go. Alright, so, why don't we go ahead and start with the environment? You mentioned that, one thing I'm not a huge fan of Mr. Mayo is how he said about a month ago that red tide's gone, press needs to shut up about it. Next thing you know, we had a bunch of dead manatees and dolphins and it wasn't gone. So, what, what would you do? I know you, you're kinda limited, but what direction would you try to go in? Would you be one of those members on the council that sit there and say, "We're doing all we can, we don't wanna hear anything else from you guys"?
No, I think that's a very dangerous place for anybody, but especially government to be. If you feel like you're honestly operating at a maximum capacity, it denies that there's room for improvement and that's just simply inaccurate. So, at the county level, of course, it's gonna require every level of government to respond, but at the county level, this is where we test our water quality. This is where we have our local fertilizer ordinances, so I'm sure many of you may already know that we're not supposed to put fertilizer on our lawns according to our county ordinances during the rainy season. And that runs from June 1st to September 30th. But, as fate would have it, just this year, the Weather Service put a firm start and end date to the Floridian rainy season and it's actually longer than, than our ordinance. So, it's from May 15th to October 15th, which would give us another four weeks of fertilizer-free gardening. So, I think that's something we certainly need to look at, but there's, there's a lot of concern about how, how enforceable these things are. You know, are we really going to be monitoring everybody as they put things on their lawn? So, I would also like to see us move towards more of an incentive program for Florida-friendly landscaping, which just require less fertilizer to begin with. So, like imagine if you could walk into Home Depot and there's a whole, you know, native Floridian section that you can plant and therefore require less fertilizer for your own lawn.
Alright, and we're gonna, I just saw this question, so we'll jump into it, cuz I noticed you mentioned it, affordable housing. I believe, I was listening to the last meeting and there's a building, I can't remember the name of it for the life of me. Somebody suggested, "Hey, we could utilize that as affordable housing." We just had the guy Van Gogh that died from, he's Mr. Affordable Housing. Someone's saying, "How would you pay for it"? So, why don't you say what your thoughts are on it and how would you pay for some of it?
Well, my thoughts on it is that we're, we're essentially, we're, we're so far behind in our affordable housing currently. So, over 40% of residents right now are having trouble paying their rent. So, almost half of our county, and if we continue to build in the way we're going, it's expected to go above 50% around 2030. So, that, at that point, truly half of our county will be struggling to make ends meet. So, there's a lot of really creative things that we can do and I think the most important is to remember that Sarasota County, we don't exist in a vacuum. The affordable housing crisis is affecting the entire country. And we've seen municipal governments be really successful with some of these techniques. So, things like inclusionary zoning, which would require maybe 10 to 15% of new development goes towards affordable housing. Particularly around employment centers, things like the UTC Mall out at the intersection of University and 75. That originally had several hundred affordable units, but the developer came and said, "It's not, you know, financially feasible or it's gonna cost us more, we're gonna lose money on it." So, at a, we need to make sure that at major employment centers, like our hospital or malls, that we are including affordable housing. And something else that I think our county can do right now is shift impact fees from a per-unit to square footage. So, right now, it's actually, you will pay-
Or even collect them. Whoops.
So, right now, it's actually more expensive in terms of impact fees to create two affordable units than one large luxury condo because they pay it per unit. So, right, real estate is always gonna be profit-driven, right? They're always gonna wanna get the most bang for their buck, but we can, we can lift some of that burden. And then something a little bit more creative and out of the box that I would like to see happen is move towards more solar, solar energy. So, here in Florida, the property value is usually a big limiting factor on affordable units. So, if we move more towards a solar-based plan, maybe we're not making the rent actually cheaper, but we are alleviating an electric bill, which could be a hundred, hundred-plus dollars a month for a family. And to a working family, that could make all the difference.
Now, what's affordable to you? Cuz I, I hate when I hear Jeff Boone go up there and say, "Affordable housing and it's 1,500 bucks", or he won't even give a monthly rate. Yeah, sure, that's affordable, but putting it in the context and everything, I'm thinking more like a family of three, thousand bucks a month or something like that. So, what's your view on what is affordable housing approximately the rate? And then along with that, someone asked if government housing brings crime. I don't think we're talking Section 8 housing.
No, we're, I, I, we really need to reframe how we're talking about affordable housing. We're not talking about Section 8, we're talking about nurses and teachers and recent high school and college graduates. People that do have jobs, but maybe those jobs aren't, aren't fully paying the bills. We're talking about our community, our policemen, our firemen, people like that, and they're, they're struggling and they need help. And, and I think it's ill-advised, especially in terms of the future, to be building out these big, you know, $300,000 per home gated developments that, that are not gonna address this need at all. So, to me, affordability, it's based on a, on a, what's the word, I'm like, a formula. So, they kinda plug in the, the, how much people are making and it's a certain percentage and things like that. But, so right now, in the spring, a study found that for a family of four living in Sarasota County, the annual cost of living was $80,000.
I remember that.
But, according to our most recent census, the median household income is $53,000. So, that's about a $30,000 gap. That, that's a salary's worth of, you know, limbo, where people aren't making what, what it actually costs to live here.
Yeah, and I, I had an issue. I think their monthly rent was low on that $80,000 number. I think they said 1,200 and I'm like, "What"?
Right, yeah, if you can find a place for 1,200, I'll pay you.
Let's hop over to the hospital. This has been very controversial. They decided to try to package all three issues together, despite the advisement of the attorney for the county. It's a hot issue. They said they'll fund, I think, 7 million towards expanding that road. So, where are you in terms of, this is going from residential to commercial-industrial. It's not commercial, changing the ordinance a little bit. Where are you on that? Cuz a lot of people are fed up with county commissioners that are coming in and changing the ordinances around. And, so where do you stand on that issue?
Well, to me, what's the point of having a rule if nobody follows it? So, when we see these, these ordinance changes or these zoning changes that are most often coming from private, private developments, like over 90% of the time, they get that variance. So, if everybody gets to break the rule, that doesn't really sound like much of a rule to me. So, I think particularly, I assume you're talking about the one on Venice?
Yeah, Venice Hospital, yeah.
Right. We really need to be careful with that area because, you know, even if it, they're telling us right now, just the hospital, right? But, what happens when you put in a big employment center, you're gonna get infill, you're gonna get doctors' offices, you're gonna get, you know, little restaurants and things. It's gonna change the entire nature of that entire stretch of road and that infrastructure that's there right now, and I harp a lot about infrastructure, but it cannot handle that currently. And I think it comes down to, are we putting the cart before the horse, as we see so often in Northport, where we're developing out, but the infrastructure isn't keeping pace.
Well, let's ask you about that then. We're building in the north, the stadium there. There's hardly any hotels. I think we're over 92, 93% capacity in all Sarasota County before the whole red tide issue. Northport, hardly any hotels. The infrastructure, they didn't even plan out River Road. Now they're doing this road swap, which we'll cover too.
Right.
What are your thoughts on that and what can be done? Warm mineral springs, would you consider partnering there to try to get a hotel? Cuz they're looking at a resort style suite there.
Right, yeah, they're going through kind of the public discourse right now, seeing what the public wants to see there. I see an incredible opportunity. I would love it if Northport got a, like a museum or something because that area is so rich and Little Salt Springs is, is so rare in our country, it, it, really around the world. They pull up artifacts from thousands and thousands of years ago and that could be an excellent source. Especially with red tide, if you can't go to the beach, it would give, give another attraction. But the thing about River Road is for years and years, in fact decades, we've been building out a long river road, thousands of homes, tens of thousands of homes, without expanding, and it's an evacuation route. So, it's a two-lane evacuation route that aptly named River Road. If it, if it rains a lot, it, it's underwater. So, that, that's a huge safety concern and I think if, if my opponent can find the time to accept donations from these developers and approve these homes, then he needs to find the time to make sure that we're safe because that's, especially on the heels of Michael. My dad lives in Panama City and it's, it's difficult to watch. And when things like that happen, when major storm events happen, we look to our government for safety, for answers. And that's not to discredit the first responders, you guys are heroes, but we know and especially sense Irma, right? I'm still frazzled from Irma, but a 2018 study by the state found that Sarasota County, we're actually ranking right now one of the lowest counties in the entire state in terms of our preparation. So, I'm just gonna talk about shelters as an example. So, they found that for a county of our size, we need 30,000 spaces in shelters should a Category 4, Category 5 hurricane come through. Take a wild guess how many we have right now.
No idea.
Less than 9,000.
I know we don't have any between Brooks, Booker's High School and Northport. The city of Venice is upset. So, why don't you transition to that? What would you do about shelters?
Right, so they're, they're usually using schools as shelters and they build schools that way, but as, as residents of Venice know, some of those schools are on Venice Island and they're in the flood plain should a Category 4 or 5 come through. So, if you look at the printout list of, and I just recently posted this on my Facebook page, the data that the state collected about our county, all but one of these locations are in Sarasota. So, and I know they made an effort to have rally points and shuttle people from South County to North County, but that to me is not an answer. That, that's kind of a Band-Aid on what is a huge, huge discrepancy and what our county should be providing for us for our own safety, you know? And again, I'm, I'm very upset about Michael and so, and uh-
You're, you're, by the way, I didn't tell her this, your Twitter, Facebook and website links are on there right now. So, they can click it and find that thing that you posted on there.
Yeah.
And, and if it seems like I'm rushing guys, cuz I'm cutting down time, so I don't-
I'm sorry.
I'm not used to my, I'm usually sit here for like two hours. Eh, whatever, we're done.
I wish, I wish.
I gotta make sure we hit red tide, but more so the outflow pipes. They haven't been testing them. City of Venice has applied for grant for 600 grand. Did you start testing them? It's obvious what's going on there. The scientists just the other day said that, I was out surfing and it smelled like I was in a shit bowl.
I saw your post, yeah.
And the scientist said that it was the sand and it was a natural occurring bacteria in the sand, which I think is BS. But, what would you do? Cuz a lot of people are concerned about this. A lot of people are concerned that no testing was being done, that they're now testing for red tide 10 miles in after the fact.
Mm-hmm, they're testing the air after the fact.
Yeah, so what are your thoughts on that? Cuz I know this is a hot button issue with these guys.
This, this is a huge, huge problem and it's gonna continue unless we get people in office that are very, that take this seriously, that aren't gonna just absolve themselves of responsibility because it's a natural, a naturally occurring thing. So, to clarify, red tide is a naturally occurring organism. We know that, we have record of it for hundreds of years. What is not normal, what is not natural, is when it comes like into the shoreline and, and all of this man-made nutrient runoff, this nutrient pollution really, and you're right, and that they haven't been testing the water, which is a massive oversight. That to me is, again, like the hurricane shelter, we rely on our government, we trust them with our safety. And right now, my baseline level of trust is not high. So, and, and the county data shows, and I got this from a hydrologist in the, in the county staff, it shows that they have known for 20 years, since 1998, that nitrogen levels in our coastal waterways have been rising.
And you know it's funny, at the county meeting, I think it was um-
Brian.
Yeah, he, someone came up and said, he brought those stats up there and they're like, "Oh wait, that conflicts with what we're being told."
Right.
Which was interesting.
I, I frankly don't believe that and, and I think it begs the question, if you're, don't understand what your county staff is collecting, the data, if you go on the county water atlas, I think it's USF.water atlas.
Yeah, he gave the site and everything. He's like, "Your county guys are giving it to us."
Yeah, yeah, this is, yeah, your hydrologists themselves are collecting this data and from the period of 1998 to this year, we have seen a net overall increase at every single water quality testing location in our county, every single one.
And guys, my point is, the county said they didn't know about this.
Yeah.
Which is amazing.
I, I, again, I don't believe that, you know, and if you don't, you know, work with your staff or communicate with them well enough where you're totally missing what the evidence, the numbers say, you know, we pay you. As taxpayers, we pay you to, to know that stuff.
Now, this transitions into that. Luigi came up. I know him, he's a big advocate for celery field. We're gonna transition him there. And he said, "Look, you guys aren't even coming to these meetings, we don't see you there, you don't come out and talk to the people, you give us three minutes here and then you're sort of a jerk to us." So, what would you do in trying to open up that flow communication to us regular folks? And then hop over to celery field, what would you do with that? That's now, they're trying to decide. I didn't like how they slammed that group and I forget their name.
Fresh Start.
Fresh Start. They acted like we don't, I think, I call them cherry top. He said, "We don't trust your group" and he basically walked out of their presentation, which, so I'll let you take over from there.
I think, well, okay, there's a multi-part thing. First with the transparency issue and, and the presence. I can tell you, I mean, even before I went on the campaign trail, I was attending many, many of these meetings, but since I filed, I have been at hundreds of events, Democratic, Republican, nonpartisan, community events, you name it, hundreds of events. And I've seen my opponent three times, three, and, and it translates the same to panels and debates. We've had well over a dozen between the primary and the general and twice he is, I have faced him at, at a panel. So, I think there's just, again, I think it goes down to this baseline level of trust. If you're, if you're not showing up, if you don't know us, how can you represent us? You know, if you don't take the time to hear what we're saying, hear our concerns outside of the commission chambers, you know, your job as a public servant is to interact with the public. And, and that to me is just a shame, you know, and, and I've seen, I think I've seen Kirajula at the Veterans Commission meetings. Nancy Dieterd I saw once at an event that she was speaking at, but they're all largely, largely absent. And even before I filed, as I said, I attended many, many meetings. I've been a longtime activist in the community and I had never seen any of our county commissioners at any of that. And I think that's just a problem. And, and so, again, it kinda comes back to this, if they don't know us, how can they represent us type of thing? And the Fresh Start people out at, at celery fields, what an example of community engagement. I mean, if we had 30 more of them, the world would be a better, a better place. They put in so much time, so much energy and effort into collecting, you know, issues based reason and what the community wanted. And they boiled it down to a couple different proposals. I like the YMCA one, where the YMCA would come in and build kind of a rec center cuz it satisfies what the community wants, to preserve that space as a recreational space, but it also satisfies the county's need of making money, which they harp on all the time. So, that to me is really a harmony and a great example of what can happen when we include the community. And taxpayers have put in millions of dollars into restoring the celery fields. So, I think we need to be protecting that investment, not only for the important function it plays in our water quality, but as a natural space, so when the beach, you can't go to the beach, you still have that recreational area.
Nice. Now, let's go over to the promenade issue. They're talking, we're doing the River Road, what's the other, Stickney Point, Trans, Swap. The guy, the promenade folks are saying, "Look, you're doing this because the state wouldn't work with Benderson, now the county's gonna get in, the county bends over for Benderson, we're not happy with this. Benderson wants to build a village, development and all that." Where do you stand on that concern?
I live, I, I could practically throw a stone to the proposed Siesta Promenade place. And, and even last season, it was during spring break, I sat through five cycles of that light without moving an inch. Because what happens is the, the traffic trying to get onto the key, right, I was going southbound on Tamiami and when Stickney Point crosses 41, people fill in that intersection, so then neither direction of Tamiami can get through. So, I sat there for five cycles as people filled in the box, which is illegal, people. There's nice big signs that say, "Don't block the box now."
SPD will let you know that one.
Yeah, well, I-
Well, that's the county, I guess, there, but-
Yeah, and, and so what the proposal there, I mean, again, this is one of the busiest intersections in our entire county and it bottlenecks on, at that bridge to get onto Siesta Key. And the proposal is what, 140,000 square feet of retail, 400 condos and 135 or so hotel rooms. So, plop that in the middle of what is already one of the busiest intersections in the entire county. I, I mean, the ambulance times alone to get onto the key and just this past February on, on Valentine's Day actually, someone had a heart attack out on Siesta Key and it took EMS to get out there, to get through traffic far longer. So, we're talking about life and death in some cases here. And I think it's just ill-advised. And, and it goes to, I joke that we are building it first and planning it second, which we kinda see crop up all over our county and it's a-
Especially with infrastructure. I can guarantee you, infrastructure is not in anyone's head there. You know, along those lines, what would you do? We had in Venice the roundabout, they wanna redo it now. But, they have individuals like Boone, and I'll say Boone cuz he's one of the attorney for the developers, he's the largest one. He came in, he said, "Oh yeah, we want this car dealership and the traffic's gonna be X." Not mentioning the fact that there's this huge residential, older folks, community going in, not mentioning the new houses there, not mentioning the hospital. And the county commissioners know that all this stuff's going in there, but they just focus on that one, so they don't have to build out the roads. Would you be somebody that just focuses on the, the car lot that's coming in or would you say, "Wait a second, wait? You gotta focus on some infrastructure here."
Yeah, no, we need to see it as, as the big picture, not just this one lot line to lot line development. It's part of a community, it's part of, of a system of roads, of, of lacking infrastructure of, of- So, we need to take into account all of that and, and bringing up Siesta Promenade, that Benderson development. The critical, the critical area plan that they have filed for is, is the first time in Sarasota County history, it doesn't cover that larger kind of bird's eye view.
I wouldn't doubt that.
So, they're talking about putting in all of this retail in the middle of strip malls. Neil is building a strip mall, not, you could, not even half a mile from there. Meanwhile, the Landings, there's empty storefronts and they've been there. I've, I've lived right across from the Landings Plaza for years now and those storefronts have been empty for years. But, the great irony is that developers east of the interstate are saying to get out of their 2050 requirements of retail, you know, with e-commerce, retail is gonna die. So, east of the interstate developers are telling us retail's on the way out. Meanwhile, these people are telling us retail's fine, retail, they're expecting an influx. So, which one is it? You know, they, they can't have their cake and eat it too, in my opinion.
Alright, let's hop over to SCAT. Somebody wrote me on this and I wanted to cover it, probably not, people might not be interested. Privatization of it. A lot of workers are worried that they're gonna lose their jobs, they're not gonna have the retirement pension. It's basically already going through. What are your thoughts on it?
Well, they did put out a request for proposals. They're, they're looking at privatizing our bus system. I mean, I'm fine with putting out some, you know, to see who's gonna come up with what and what private company, but I caution everybody that if we move forward with this, private companies require a profit, right? They, they have operating costs, they have to, whereas the county can run services like that at cost. So, I think what we're gonna see is maybe it get a little bit more expensive. I'm skeptical of if it's actually going to improve anything because it's not really addressing the infrastructure needs or the lack of infrastructure. It's just kind of addressing the bus system itself, not traffic as a large-scale, again, bird's eye type view. I'm, I'm interested to see how it pans out, but I, I'm skeptical of it.
Okay, now, Mo Marine, the county decided to commit 20 million. They didn't, they just, I, I think they wanted a full-on commitment. Where do you stand on that with the Mo Marine coming in? Would you want any more than the 20 million in tourist taxes going there? And just touch on that, would you want them to buy or lease? That's the other issue.
I, I mean, I'm not opposed to mo- moving out there. I know the city commission, Sarasota City Commission has some problems with it.
They're a little upset with it.
I don't have, I don't see it as that big of a problem, but what I do, 20 million dollars is a lot. And the tourism development tax in particular, as the name might suggest, is for tourism kind of related things. It's making sure our beaches are clean and the, the different stadiums and things like that, get a cut of that money. When we're facing the biggest ecological crisis that our area has seen, certainly in my lifetime, maybe ever, I am concerned that that money's gonna go towards moat instead of really shoring up and making sure the businesses that are being affected right now. I'm just concerned that, that we're gonna put that much money onto a project that really could wait a year or two or something like that when there's mom and pop restaurants and businesses that are going, they are suffering.
And that's a real valid point. It's a tourist tax. Why aren't we paying to help some of the businesses that are struggling? Some that are going out of business.
Yeah, absolutely.
And some of the folks, the waitresses and waiters and all that stuff.
I have several friends that have lost their jobs through this and that are now applying for financial assistance. And I think we just need to be cautious before we dive headfirst into a project like that, especially when there's so many financial questions about Benderson Park in general, that we need to make sure that, that the people that are here, that, that are actively being affected by this crisis are, are shored up, that they have a safety net to fall back on.
Alright, how about Siesta Key? Your opponent, and I, I wrote, I typed this out as he said it, he said, "The Siesta Key businesses don't wanna play ball and let people park there that are going to the beach. Maybe we need to send code enforcement by." And I thought, "Who the fuck, who are you? Sorry." What's your position on that? They've looked at charging, they've looked at trolleys, they've looked at the bus, they've looked at a vacant building. What are your thoughts?
I owe the traffic on the Keys. They are, there's nothing quite like that hot button issue. People really get upset about that. And rightfully so, again, kind of coming back from circle to ambulances and making sure that we can get emergency services out there. I'm not convinced on paid parking on Siesta Key. We are in a county that is already so below the average threshold of public access. I'm concerned that unless we kind of build in a way for county residents to park there for free and only tourists pay for parking, that we're blocking out the public in general. So, the state average of public access in coastal counties is about 40% and Sarasota's hovering right about 20% public access. So, we're already so restricted and where the public can go to the beach and take their family for recreation, I'm, I'm just not, I'm, I'm concerned that if it's not done correctly, that it's gonna harm working families that need that public access anyways.
Alright, and we're gonna try to knock out some quick ones. Legacy Trail Extension, that's on the bell. What are your thoughts on that?
I think that it's a, it's a, it's a lot of money and a lot of people, I've had a lot of conversations that people are concerned that it's just so much money, but I think it will add a, a good recreation space. It's gonna bring up property values. It could, for those of you who are concerned about traffic, it could alleviate some of that. If we have a big network of trails, you know, maybe some people will wanna bike to work. There's several schools that are within a few miles of that, so maybe it'll take some, some, kids can bike to school and things like that. But, I also think it's a good box to check in terms of safety. You know, for bikers that are out on our roads, we, we have some pretty dismal rates of, you know, road accidents with pedestrians and people that are on bikes. So, in terms of a safety standpoint, I see that being a, a good thing. So, I will be voting in favor of it. I, I think it'll be, I think it's an exciting project. And, and especially if you're looking at it from the future, which I, we need to be leading from the future, not from the past. And I think it could be absolutely an asset to this community.
Alright, if the homestead goes through and it doubles, people aren't talking about this, it's, you might like it-
No one's talking about this.
Yeah, no one is, and you might like it because you're like, "Oh, I get an extra 25 grand, whatever, on homestead." But, that's money the counties and cities use and so the budgets are gonna take a hit. You're gonna lose programs.
Huge hit. So, we are already kind of in a tenuous place with our budgets already. Last budget cycle, you know, they were tossing around closing all of our public libraries for a day, cutting SCAT even further. So, already a lot of these services that, sorry, checking the clock. So, a lot of these services that are particularly working families rely on are already kind of on the chopping block. So, it, it follows, in my opinion, that if we already aren't getting the services that we need from our government, that we need to be really careful when we're considering this homestead exemption. So, for those that aren't aware, the first two amendments that'll be on your extraordinarily long ballot, so buckle in. Ron Turner's averaging about 45 minutes a ballot per person, so get comfortable. The first two amendments on there are homestead exemptions that in Sarasota County, by 2021, they're projecting an $11 million deficit if that passes. So, that's-
It's huge. And nobody's really talking about it.
And nobody's talking about it.
Yeah, and I can tell you, the county's already missing budgets, which transitions into another question. They had to give up management of the parks. They're giving those to the city. Northport bought two years, Venice is still working on a plan. But, city of Sarasota is pretty pissed because, why? They're saying the county didn't take care of the parks. Where do you stand on these?
I, this is, this is a very-
This is part of that budget transition.
Yeah, yeah, and in fact, the county had a lawsuit about this in the 70s, this kind of dual taxation. So, the county is supposed to take care of things like parks and, and the city pays into the county pool of taxes and things like that. But, they are supposed to uphold their end of bargain. And so, the county actually went to court with the city of Sarasota several years ago, a couple decades ago. And, and the judge ruled in favor of the city, that they found that they were paying double taxes. They were paying taxes in the city and paying taxes in the county and not getting what their money was worth. So, I think it's, again, it comes down to this, this idea that our government exists to provide services to us. Parks, infrastructure- Uh, parks, infrastructure, um, zoning regulations and things like that. And to me, they're, they're kind of dropping the ball, which is why it's so concerning about these homestead amendments. We're already in a place where we're cutting really valuable things in our community. Um, and if this passes, make no mistake, that money is gonna come from somewhere. Someone's gonna raise taxes if that goes through. Um, so you're either gonna pay it to the state, which gives it to the county, or you're gonna pay it to the county. Um, so I don't see it as really being a net savings, because it's gonna just blow a hole in the budget. Um, and we need that money, we, we frankly need that money.
All right, how about, um, this is a two-part, maybe, Venice is, some people are pushing for certain candidates, because they want to approach the county again about merging the fire department, the Venice one with the county. My understanding from Carajula was that the city of Venice didn't want to give up their fire trucks for free, they wanted X amount of money, and that's where it ended. Where would your thoughts be on taking the city of Venice fire and merging it into the county? Where would, have you studied it? Where would your thoughts be on it?
This, this came up in Venice. I admit, I try and do as much homework as I can. That one, I, I, the first person to ask me about that was last week, so I...
There, there's a move afoot, they're trying to get that on the agenda again.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I talked to a couple Venice city commissioners, and it, it, I trust them to figure out what, what is best for Venice. I'm not convinced that I trust the county to figure out what's best for Venice. So I, I'm not, ne- neither here nor there on that, I, I just think I need a little bit more research.
All right, and no problem, because they don't even know what they're doing in Venice yet. The, uh, the relationship, which goes into this Venice question. I don't know if it's the mayor's personality and it conflicts with some of the county commissioners, it seems like the county works good with Northport and Sarasota at times.
At times, yes.
Um, what would you do to try to make it for a better relationship? I know in Venice, they hate the county, it seems like, and it seems like they're never getting along. What would you do as a can, as a county commissioner to try to build a better relationship?
I actually, um, taught conflict resolution in some of our high schools. So I, I feel if I can teach a couple of 14-year-olds to find the common ground, uh, then I should hopefully be able to teach a couple adults to find the common ground. But it comes down to this idea that, e- even if you live in a city within our county, every time you step out of your door, you're confronted with a decision that the county has made. And we have this shared destiny. We, we all have a vested interest in making sure that our county and our cities are working together. And I won't name the city commissioner that told me this, but they find that the county is quote abrasive. So I think maybe a bit of it is just a cultural issue, um, but, but I like it when people get along, because that's when problems get solved. And I'll, I'll absolutely be a huge proponent of that, making sure it's about communicate, active listening and communication.
Now, if the, if a county commissioner, you know what, actually, if a regular folk come in, let's say I'm here and I'm like, hey, I got us 10 people, we're concerned about some stuff, would you be open to meeting with us? Because that seems like to be, and I know we covered it a little bit, seems like to be the huge disconnect that they don't want to until election time, four years down the road.
Right. Um, and I hear this complaint about my opponent a lot. Um, emails are going unanswered, phone calls are going unanswered, he doesn't show up to things. In fact, many of our debates and panels, he doesn't even give the courtesy of, I can't make it, and here's why, he just, it's, it's, it's radio silence. And again, if you are a public servant, you're not a private servant, right? Your job is to, to listen to people and to hear those concerns. And even if the problem can't necessarily be resolved, um, there's so much, especially from a conflict resolution standpoint, to feeling heard and feeling validated in your concerns and making sure that people can, can restore that trust back in our government.
All right, how about the, um, where is it at? The single district issue, that's going on the agenda. I'm actually, I'm for it, so I hope you are. Here's, here's, single districts on the, um, you're gonna be able to vote for it, it's in one of the constitutional amendments, whatever they're called. And basically, right now, Wesley and Elle can run if they live in a district. Now, everybody within Sarasota County can vote on either Wesley or Elle. Single district means that either Elle or Wesley can run, but only the people within that district can vote on them. And the idea is to get rid of the dark money, in my mind. I think it's a good thing. Where do you stand on it?
Uh, I will, upfront, upfront, I will be voting in favor of that, for, for a myriad of reasons. So what, the system, how it works right now, the candidate has to live in their district, and I'm running in District Four, that's approximately Proctor Road to Laurel, um, and it includes Siesta Key. That's approximately, it's about the middle of the counties. Um, and there's about 60 people in District Four. Countywide, there are 314,000 voters, as opposed to 60,000 in each of the districts. So we're already talking about a substantial decrease in the cost that it takes, um, certainly the time investment. I, I'm driving from Northport to the airport all the time. Uh, in fact, I, I never left the county, if you can believe this, I never left the county, two weeks ago, it was a Sunday, never left the county, I was in my car for four hours, driving back and forth. I went down to Inglewood, went over to Northport, up to Venice, back to Inglewood, up to Newtown. So in, just in terms of a, a time investment, I haven't seen the start and end of a single event, uh, in quite some time. And I think that that's unfair to voters, that you, if we're gonna complain about our, our commissioners being absent, I want to be there, I do, I really, I do. But when I have to get in the car and drive 30 minutes to go...
That is an issue.
It's, it's a huge issue. So I think it'll elevate the, the entire conversation, if people have the time to really stop and have very in-depth, meaningful conversations. Like I said, it'll, it'll be a decrease in cost. Um, but I actually believe that it will result in better candidates. I, I honestly believe that. I've talked to so many wonderful people that would make fantastic local representatives, but they're intimidated by the network of developers, they're intimidated by the price tag, you know, and I don't think anybody, I think it's wrong if you're intimidated by your civil rights. If you want to run, you should be able to run. And, and I think it will result, just in general, in better quality candidates that really can knock every door in the district, can, can really engage people in those, nobody wants 15 shiny mailers, I'm sick of receiving them, I don't know about you guys, but that's, that's not what people want. They want to know that they're being heard and that those issues are being acted on. And countywide, it's just very, very difficult to make that happen.
All right, I got two more questions, then, uh, you're gonna sum it up, so it's up to you on when you finish. I know we're, we're getting close to your timeline.
It's all good.
She's got a busy day. Um, Capstone, the Hodings Group, they're, um, they're selling the Player Center, Center for Performing Arts, it's 30 million. My idea, and I may be wrong with this, um, West Waterside Place, it's east of 75, I think, there's a lot of controversy over that, and I don't know if you've looked into it, about where the money's flowing, all the parties involved in it. Have you looked into that at all?
I, not, I'm looking at your paper, Waterside Place, I'm not familiar with that specifically, but I will say that if it, um, at what point does a coincidence become a pattern? And I think the pattern is that... Hello. The pattern is that developers in our area don't have the best track record. And I think it's normal and probably advisable to look at that with a healthy amount of skepticism.
Okay, and then last question, is short-term rentals, um, what's that, what's that place of it, um, who's it, who does them?
Uh, like Airbnb.
Yeah, they're the ones, they're upset, they want some changes. I know a lot of the local entities, they don't like the short-term rentals, um, they want changes so that they're more flexible with short-term rentals. Where do you stand on it?
Uh, well, right now, we have, there's a couple different ordinances that are going on, and particularly on Siesta Key, um, because it's such a destination, we're seeing a lot of issues, um, around noise, around people. There's a lot of strangers in what were formerly family neighborhoods, a lot of people are complaining about the trash, that when a visitor comes, they'll put the trash out and trash doesn't come for four days or something, so there's a very smelly issue. Um, I, I, I can see both sides of the argument, to be honest. Um, and I, I'm not sure where the conversation is in our government, but I think...
I don't think it's really anywhere.
I don't, yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's really, uh, anywhere, but there are ordinances, but it comes down to, it's very difficult to enforce some of those things. So even if a law does go on the books, um, it, it's gonna rely on people reporting to code enforcement and things like that. Um, I'm, and there's, there's, there's some literature that suggests across the country that it's really impacting affordable housing. So it's taking what would have been a rental property on the market, it removes it and makes it a short-term rental for people that, that live out of town. So it's affecting, we're seeing this across the country where it's affecting just the general supply of affordable housing. Affordable housing, it's very rare that it's a, a brand-new building, right? It's just like cars. Some people buy brand-new cars, some people buy slightly-used cars, and some people buy junkers. Affordable housing is the junker to, to, you know, lightly-used, um, and that's what these Airbnbs so often are. So we are seeing it impact our affordable housing, just supply in general.
All right, now, most people are gonna watch this later, I, I don't, just a few people are on now, what are you doing up now? You should be at the beach at 11 o'clock, 11:30.
Well, if, if it was swimable, maybe.
There you go. Um, go ahead and summarize, let people know what they can do, because there's only a few weeks left. Melons are coming out, and that's why I wanted to get them out early. Let them know your site, your site's on there, but if they want to volunteer, all that stuff, and then pitch why they should go with Wesley.
Right.
Wesley Ann Beggs.
Wesley Ann Beggs. Uh, it's, uh, some people are confused if I'm a woman or not, I am a woman. I know Wesley can be kind of a gender-neutral name, so I'm told. Um, so if you want to get involved, and I encourage you to, um, you can, you can find me basically anywhere online at Win With Wesley. So on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, I'm all Win With Wesley, and then my website, if you can guess, is www.winwithwesley.com. You can send me a message there, I, I read every message. Uh, you can sign up to volunteer, you can make a donation. We're in the final weeks here, I think early voting starts in like eight or nine days. So it's the, we're trying to get this ball across the, across the finish line here. If you are satisfied with the way that things are going, with the direction that things are going in, I am not your candidate. If you are, um, ready for some change, ready to see someone that is going to make the effort to show up and be there and listen and act on your concerns, if you're ready for someone that's gonna leave from the future and not the past, then I am your candidate. Um, I, I think we've seen for quite some time now, some of our representatives dropping the ball on, on a lot of things, even if we fill the board chamber rooms, as we saw with the Siesta Key, um, setbacks, they got an actual busload, a literal busload, of people to show up, and they still voted in favor of it. So we need to make sure that we're electing quality people that are going to answer every phone call, every email, to show up at events and, and, and make sure that you know that you can trust them to act in your best interest. Because what we're seeing right now, it's not representation, it's politics. Um, and I don't accept any money from developers at all, I haven't accepted, not that they would donate to me anyways, because I gather they don't like me.
That's a good thing here.
Right, I, I don't take any of that money, which is more than my opponent can say, who takes a staggering amount of money from the development community. So I'm, I'm about environmental protection, affordable housing, and sustainable development. Um, I'm about economic growth for the future, we've done a really poor job with our young professionals. We, I, I often joke that Sarasota County's largest export is young talent, and that's just not a viable economic model. Um, and it's in everybody's best interest to make sure that we have a healthy and diverse economy for our young professionals, um, to, to be in. So please vote for me, uh, November 6th, I am so looking forward to serving everybody. Northport to the airport, even if single-member districts pass, you can expect some town halls down in Northport, because that's the kind of candidate that we need. We need someone that maybe if you're, even if you're elected in your district, that we all share this future and, and we all deserve a, a place at that table, because as someone much wiser than myself once said, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, and we've been on the menu for a long time.
And as you guys know, I follow politics throughout Sarasota County, and Wesley doesn't know this, but I'm actually gonna endorse her in my, um... Yeah, you got my endorsement. I actually followed, read up on her, and I just wanted to sit with her and find out more about her. So you guys will see my endorsements, which will come out in about an hour or two, so Wesley's on it.
I really appreciate it.
I think she's the one that can, um, hopefully beat Elle Mayo, and Elle Mayo, I think, is bad for our county.
We're, we're ahead of them right now, so we just gotta, we just gotta stay there. So tell your friends, I'm not a teacher, but your homework is to tell 10 people, remind them to vote. Uh, we, I will be on the first page of that, like I said, very long ballot. Um, make sure you make it all the way down county, because we don't deserve better representation just in DC, we deserve it here at home.
Yep, and guys, remember, I'm a Republican, and I'm voting a Democrat.
I appreciate it.
Politics shouldn't come into play on local, I don't think so.
It doesn't.
All right, guys, everybody have a great day, and, um, share this video as much as you can.